I don't know, in public hearing and introduction code amendment nineteen oh six amendment to section two point nine of the Fountain Valley Crossing Specific Plan, presentation by Matt Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The City of Fountain Valley Planning Department received an application for a code amendment to the Fountain Valley Crossing Specific Plan on March twenty seventh, twenty nineteen, to allow for one electronic message center in the specific plan area. At the Planning Commission meeting last month, on October twenty sixth, the Planning Commission voted four to one recommending the City Council approve this code amendment. Staff recommends that the City Council conduct the public hearing and perform the following tasks: approve a resolution approving mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting program in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act, introduce an ordinance approving code amendment nineteen dash oh six, and introduce an ordinance approving a development agreement with the City of Fountain Valley and Becker Billboards for the construction of a new seventy-three-foot-tall electronic message center with two displays. The current request submitted by Becker Billboards is for a code amendment to section two point nine of the Fountain Valley Crossing Specific Plan to allow for the construction of the sign with two displays on private property located at one eight three seven five Euclid Street. The proposed pole-mounted digital sign, again, would be seventy-three feet tall with two display panels forming a V shape. The panels would be fourteen feet tall, forty-eight feet wide, for a total of six-hundred-and-seventy-two square feet per panel. The proposed sign will incorporate a louver technology that will block light spillage, and I'll explain later. And the existing sign that tops out right above the Fountain Valley copy here was approved in twenty eleven by the Planning Commission for a variance for the height of the sign. So, section two point nine of the Crossing Specific Plan is proposed to be amended to allow for the display of off-site advertising within a limited area along the four oh five freeway in between mile marker twelve point four one and twelve point five oh, which is adjacent to Ellis, Ellis Euclid Street and Santa Ana River off the four oh five freeway. The California Outdoor Advertising Act prohibits property owners from using billboards along landscape freeways for off-site commercial advertising. In California, approximately thirty-three percent of the freeways are considered landscape freeways, therefore prohibiting billboards, and approximately one hundred and twenty-four miles of Orange County freeways are considered landscape freeways, which prohibit billboards. This project site, in between twelve point four one and twelve point five oh, is the only area in Fountain Valley that's not considered a landscape freeway. Therefore, the applicant can apply for a permit with Caltrans and permit a sign if the local jurisdiction permits a sign, therefore requiring the code amendment before you. As I mentioned, the louver technology, these are like a baffle system that absorb light from the LEDs and prevent passage of light in a projected, protected direction. And I have a couple of videos that illustrate that louver technology quite well here. So, as you look at the billboard head-on, you see it, but as you travel and you are at a much greater angle, you don't see it as much, and then you don't see it at all. And these images are kind of similar to the situation proposed tonight where there's a large roadway, the sign across that roadway and residential within proximity. And the second video actually shows a large roadway, like a freeway, in between the sign and residential on the other side, similar to how this billboard is orientated toward other users and, and a large roadway. So, that concludes that video, and this is a close-up of the louver technology, and this graph indicates the amount of light in any given direction and it measured at a certain points from that sign. Now, light measurements are generally discussed using a foot candle metric, which is defined as the amount of light produced by a single candle when measured one foot away. So, based on industry standards pertaining to light trespassing, impacts would be considered potentially significant if luminance from a sign exceeded point-three-foot candles over the ambient lighting conditions at a distance of two-hundred-and-fifty feet from the light source. This chart shows two-hundred feet at this line here, four-hundred feet at this line here, six-hundred, eight-hundred, and one-thousand. Approximately eight-hundred feet is right here touching Moon Park, Costa Mesa, which is the closest residential properties to this proposed sign. And at eight-hundred feet, at a straight-on viewing angle, which would approximately be right here on the freeway, but at eight-hundred feet, the light, amount of light you would experience would be point-zero-two-seven foot candles, whereas even under Caltrans requirement under the Outdoor Advertising Act, their minimum requirements are point-three-foot candles at two-hundred-and-fifty feet, and that is their maximum. So, with this louver technology, the foot candle readings will be well below what is required, the maximum levels under, under Caltrans requirements. This graph shows the light impacts to the north in Fountain Valley, and all industrial properties over here and no residential properties. And this image is rendering before and after of the proposed sign. This is looking northwest in Costa Mesa, at Moon Park, the four oh five freeway back here. This is the, the current sign that stands at fifty-nine feet tall. With the proposed sign, the V is here. Again, this image is without the louver technology and is for illustration purposes only. There's a larger image of the proposed billboard looking from Moon Park. This is looking at the billboard south along the River Trail, the Santa Ana River. This image is from the Euclid or Ellis, southbound on-ramp to the four oh five freeway. This picture is taken by myself on, earlier this year, in April, looking northwest towards Moon Park and Costa Mesa, towards the approximate location of the sign, and that sign would be behind here, behind this, this very large tree. And this, again, is an image, this is the approximate location of where the sign would be, again, looking from Costa Mesa, looking northwest. This is a picture I took today of the sign that represents the extension of the freeway wall, and it looks like most exterior work is completed by Caltrans. You could see the top of the existing sign at fifty-nine feet right here, and good to note that, you know, there is less vegetation than the April picture being, we're moving into the winter months, so you can see the existing sign here, so the proposed billboard would just be on top of that sign. And I tried to put the proposed sign against the picture I took today of what you may see if you could picture this. This rendering was taken many months ago before the construction of the freeway wall. And again, the, the proposed sign next to the Guitar Center on Euclid Street is approximately nine-hundred feet to the closest residential property to the southeast. So, if this code amendment is approved, the city will enter into a development agreement with Becker Billboards for this billboard. The initial term will be for forty years. Bill, Becker will pay the city an initial payment of sixty thousand dollars for consideration for this billboard. They'll pay an annual fee of five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to the city, and on the first day of the sixth year of this term, and every five years thereafter, the fee shall be increased ten percent. So, for example, on the sixth year, the annual revenue will be six-hundred-and-five-thousand, and then on the eleventh year, six-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-five-hundred, and so on. That concludes staff's report, and staff recommends alternative one and approve the following: a resolution for mitigated negative declaration and mitigated monitoring and reporting program in accordance with SEQA, introduce an ordinance for the code amendment nineteen oh six, and introduce an ordinance for a development agreement with Becker Billboards in the City of Fountain Valley. Thank you, I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from council?
The applicant is here and has their own presentation as well.
Okay, I have a question, can you go back to the foot candle chart? Okay, you said that the Caltrans requirement was point-three-foot candles from two-hundred-and-fifty feet?
That's correct.
Okay, so if I am reading, the first line is two-hundred, and it looks like it's more than point-three-foot candles.
At two-hundred.
Okay, but two-fifty, is, is it supposed to be point-three at two-fifty at?
Point-three at two-fifty, and their independent analysis, lighting analysis, has verified that it would be under that measurement, and then mitigated measure after construction of the sign is for another analysis to be provided, once the sign is constructed, that it meets this requirement. So, actual live readings will be required after the sign's constructed to ensure that they comply with those readings.
Okay, 'cause it, right now, it looks like the zero angle is point-four-foot candles at two-hundred feet, so that's pretty close to the point-three, that's more than the point-three.
At two-hundred.
Yeah.
But the requirement from Caltrans is two-fifty.
Two-fifty, alright.
Is a point-three, maximum point-three-foot candles at two-hundred-and-fifty, so when it goes to point, or when it goes to four, a distance of four-hundred feet, you have a decrease to point-one-foot candle.
Okay, alright. I don't know, why, why didn't they just measure it at two-fifty and make it, make it easier?
That would've made it easier, yes.
Okay. And then I have a question about the, the term, the, I'm kind of a little concerned with the forty-year development agreement term, it seems a little bit long for me. The, I think the, the one across the freeway is fifteen years with fifteen-year renewal term, is that right?
Is it? Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir, the, the one on the city property is for a shorter term.
Okay.
So, if you wanted to match that, we could address that with the applicant, or if you wanted to keep it with forty years, we could do that as well.
Okay, what's your, do you have an opinion on it, or?
It's at the pleasure of the City Council in terms of how long you'd want to lock it in.
Okay, alright. Thank you. Okay, so I guess, should we hear from the applicant next, or public, public comments first?
Probably best to hear from the applicant next, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, alright, the applicant's here, come on up.
Good evening, council, good evening, mayor, and good evening, staff. My name is Joseph White, I'm the applicant for Becker Boards. We originally submitted this project back in April of two thousand and nineteen. We've been working with staff on this project, and we also helped push the city project to RFP. We thought that both projects running at the same time would be beneficial because obviously putting out a billboard to RFP would create the best opportunity for the city to generate money from that. Once that was completed and the city knew what the sign was worth of the city project, we pushed forward with ours, and in negotiations with staff, which I'll admit they did a very good job, the city came out very victorious when you compare it to other billboards in and around Southern California, and quite frankly, in and around the rest of the United States. So, this is a, a great opportunity for the city to generate a source of income from something that has zero impact as far as it doesn't require police, it doesn't require fire, there's no sewer, there's no water. The only impact that it has is blight, and the only blight that it's affecting is traffic traveling along the, the four oh five freeway. So, our billboard is, as we mentioned, it's seventy-three feet high, slightly taller than the city project. The mitigated negative declaration that we had through inflammation, or inflammation of feasible, practical measures, there will be no impact from our billboard. We've gone a step further since we originally submitted this and since the SEQA study was done, which is the inflammation of the new technology, which was demonstrated today, which was the louver technology. From the beginning of this project, the main complaints that we received came from the potential impact to the Costa Mesa residents, which we listened to, we heard, and we did our very best to address it. When we were presented with the louver technology from our digital, digital manufacturer, we knew right away that this would be a great fit for this project. So, that was something that we thought has been very beneficial. The sign is not visible to any Fountain Valley residents in the future. If there are any developments that take place within the Fountain Valley Crossing, they too will not be able to see any light pollution from the billboard because of louver technology, as you're able to see from the video that was demonstrated. So, our offer, as most of you know, is five-hundred-and-fifty thousand per year to operate this billboard. Our term that we had proposed was forty years, that matched our private lease agreement, and yes, I understand it is ten years longer than the city agreement, which we can certainly agree to a thirty-year deal if that's more favorable to council. But we did the math on the forty years, the total amount of payments to the city that would be generated from this billboard was to be thirty-one million, four-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, and six-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars. We can go to the next, oh, I do it. Oh, there we go, fancy. So, this is our overhead, which is what you guys saw. It's right on the edge of Fountain Valley. As traffic travels along the four oh five, I would be very surprised at how many residents within your city would be able to pinpoint the beginning or the ending of your city there. So, absent a Fountain Valley Crossing identifying logo, I don't even think that the residents traveling along the four oh five would know the billboard's actually in Fountain Valley, which I think the impact to the city is lessened by that. Here's the image of the sign. So, as we pointed out, this is an existing on-premise sign that received a variance because the staff recognized that despite the height limitations that were put forth for this project, the fact that the freeway is elevated at this location, a variance was granted to raise the height of the sign, and that's the same reason why we would need the additional height for our billboard. You know, as we've mentioned, or as Matt mentioned, this is the only location along the four oh five that is a non-landscape freeway, which means even if the city were to grant another approval for another billboard along the four oh five, Caltrans would deny that because it's within a landscape freeway. So, that in turn gives protection to the residents and obviously the City Council here that in approving this, in order for another billboard to be approved after ours, number one, there'd have to be an ordinance change to allow another billboard, and number two, there would have to be a change in classification of the Caltrans landscape freeway. Just an overhead. Here's the view of the sign as it is today. This is the view, you guys saw images that Matt took. These were images that I took that were closer to where the residents are viewing them from. You know, I understand the pictures that were taken were all taken at the edge of the park, but I think the impact of the sign, if there was one, would be if it was impactful to the residents. And as you can see from these pictures, and I identified them with the stars that you can see there, you can't see the billboard from any of these residents. Not only that, since these pictures were taken, there's been a fifteen-foot-high wall, high Caltrans screening wall that's been built, and then you add in our louver technology, and in my time that I've spent in the neighborhood, which has probably been ten times over, I really don't think there's going to be any impact whatsoever from this billboard, and certainly not greater than having a freeway next to them and/or all of the high-tension power lines that run along the Santa Ana River. This is the louver technology, I think the videos tell the story. It's comparable to where, like, if you have a cellphone where it has a privacy screen on it, the second that you turn to the side, you can't see that cellphone anymore. It's the exact same technology here that they're using for these billboards. And obviously, it's created so that we can build billboards closer to residents and not have an impact. So, it's really a response to local jurisdictions and obviously the progression of technology with digital billboards. So, to summarize, our project, again, submitted in April of two thousand and nineteen, we've worked very closely with staff, we've heard, you know, the residents' complaints, we've done our very best to address each and every one of them. I think we demonstrated that by receiving staff support on the project, and I think it was really driven home by the Planning Commission, who was looking at this project only from a planning perspective, and it had nothing to do with the financial aspect of it. It had to do with their recognition of the fact that there was no impacts to the residents, and especially residents of Fountain Valley, and in turn, they, and that's why they voted four-one and, and approved the project. So, again, the billboard has no impact, there's no police, there's no fire, there's no sewer, there's no cost to the city. Not visible to any Fountain Valley residents. We've added restrictions in the type of advertising that we have within our, our development agreement, no political speech, no marijuana, no tobacco, no adult uses. We're allowing city branding where the city can use this to brand city events, and emergency messaging in times where these signs need to be taken over by the state and/or local jurisdictions. So, this ordinance, again, is only, the change only allows one sign, there's not going to be a proliferation of billboards created from this, and if they do, they're going to have to go through the same exact process that I did, and they're going to have to declassify a freeway. So, there's a big barrier of entry to this, and you guys would have to vote on any additional signage. So, that protection is there. And again, the impact of this project, as you guys had your budget committee meeting before this, this is going to create, if it was forty years, it'd be thirty-one million, four-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, and six-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars. And again, no cost to the city. So, with that, I'm open to answer any questions you may have, but obviously, we've worked very hard for this project, and we've seen it as a perfect location for a billboard, and given the financial benefit to the city, I personally see this as a no-brainer, but obviously, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from council? Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, first of all, as far as campaign contributions, have you written any campaign contributions to any of our City Council members while working with the city?
Um, acting, I, first, I don't remember, actually. It's been three years, not that I recall.
Okay, well, your name was on the check.
Okay.
So, why would you believe that people would not?
Just for the record, I have not received any campaign contributions.
Okay. So, Mr. Becker, why would you believe that people would not know that the billboard is in Fountain Valley, especially if they're coming from south, traveling north, they pass the Hyundai building? Where would you imagine people might think that they are when they see this billboard?
I guess I'm more speaking generally. If you were to go to the grocery store and ask people where the beginning and ending of your city, I'd be very shocked to hear them call out the Santa Ana River.
Oh, people really know where they are when they're in Fountain Valley. So, gosh, I have so much here. So, when somebody's, when a vehicle is traveling on Euclid, approaching the freeway area in the right-hand lane, gonna see the billboard right there outside of the, the green room, right? And then you enter the freeway, now, in a little bit of time from now, you're in a very, very different area than you were configuration-wise back in twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, due to the four oh five improvement project. That whole area looks very different, it's very large, there's a lot there. Personally, I haven't actually gotten on the freeway myself in my vehicle, but I've been there in other people's vehicles. So, people are going to see this billboard, they're going to keep going, enter the freeway, now they're going to see another billboard, meanwhile, they're very distracted, at least twice, not to mention the fact that the entire area has changed tremendously. You don't see this as a concern?
No. Billboards are legally allowed by the state, and they're governed by the state. We're required to keep our messages static for eight seconds. That's a safety concern that was addressed on a federal level, and it was enacted by all the states across the US. We have been developing billboards for fourteen years, we've had digital billboards on the freeway for over ten, we've had zero complaints, no one's ever called into our company complaining about any. The only time we've ever had issues is in a hearing like this, and one is, once the billboard is built, we never again hear from anyone on them. So, if it were a safety issue, obviously, we would be addressing that legally on a daily basis likely, and the states wouldn't allow them.
So, are you aware that people's attention span is eight seconds? If you Google, you know, what is the, what does our attention span, seriously, you will see it's eight seconds. So, there's something there as far as the advertisement for eight seconds and our attention span, there's a connection there. What I also want to say is that the light, I'm not even going to get into the weeds there, but at seventy-three feet high, and as wide as it is with the six-hundred-and-seventy-two square-foot panels on each side, you're, we're going to see it. And this is our coveted crossings area, that's a hundred-and-sixty-two acres, and was rezoned in January of twenty eighteen from mixed-use, I mean, I'm sorry, to mixed-use from industrial. It's supposed to be our new downtown with restaurants, nightlife, housing, et cetera, et cetera. I don't see why we wouldn't want to put this there, quite frankly. It makes no sense why we would want to have a structure there that people will see, seven-feet-high. And I mean, you're the company that wants to bring it in, so I mean, maybe my comment shouldn't be directed to you, but that's kind of strange. Let's see. You mentioned in the Planning Commission meeting from October twenty-sixth, that there's still a couple of billboards, not in Fountain Valley, but they're still there for some reason. Can you just kind of talk about that for a sec?
Uh, yeah, those are in Westminster, those were built in a redevelopment and, for the redevelopment agencies to increase tax dollars to local jurisdictions. So, technically speaking, those are on-premise signs, so they're meant to advertise products sold within the city of Westminster and direct traffic from the freeway into the city. But we don't own any of those.
Okay.
And that's just legal research that I know. Why it's not being enforced, I have no idea, but...
So, do you pay any taxes, does your company pay any taxes to the city on this or to the state for the billboards?
We will pay taxes to the county, and then, yes, the development agreement fee pays five-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in year one, and over thirty-one million dollars over forty years.
I might have more, I'll have to find it, if that's okay.
Alright, thank you. I had a question, can you, can you explain how the auto dimmer works, like, at night? I, I understand it's not as bright as during the day?
Yeah, the, the dimming technology, obviously, during the, the day, it's at its brightest point because it needs to be lit up bright enough to be lighter than, I guess, what the sun is. But at night, all of the digital billboards have auto-dimming technology that they come with, and there is measurements that are done by the states. So, if someone were to drive by a digital billboard and they were to feel it was too light, right, or too bright as they drive by, they, they can reach out to the state, the state will come out and do an independent lighting, they have like the, a knit gun, that they'll go and they'll do an independent study on your sign, and if they find your sign to not be dimming correctly, then they'll issue you a notice saying that your sign's too bright. Typically, they just call you, and we fix it, and that's all done remotely. And that's all done remotely. And if there is an issue with brightness, that's something not working correctly with the technology of the sign, and we would quickly fix that. So we too, you know, don't want our billboards too bright because you can't see the ads.
Right, right. Okay, that's all a question I have for you. Yeah, Councilman Grandis.
So how many billboards like this do you have in Southern California?
I believe we have.
Ballpark.
Yeah, 15 faces of digital.
How many times have you been sued for liability in an accident?
Zero.
How many times in this, in the country have you been sued for liability in an accident?
Zero.
And one of the candidates during the campaign was talking, I think it's fairly minor, about electrical cost. Who's responsible for the electrical costs?
We are. It would be an independent meter and we would pay our bill.
I figured.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for now.
Yes, Mayor Protem Konstantin.
Okay, so Mr. Becker, which cities with comparable populations to Fountain Valley do you have billboards? Because I've seen Phoenix and some other cities that just don't really match us. What's the attraction here besides that? I get it, I get it, yeah.
A comparable city? We've done business in Baldwin Park, Carson, Lynwood, Hawthorne and several others. I don't know exactly the population as far as in comparison, but I know that the financial benefit that they've received each year that we pay our development agreement fees, they reach out to us and thank us for doing so. So I know that they're very happy. And the fact that we're not getting any complaints, staff's not getting any complaints from this, and the only communication that we're having is positive. Either they're telling us thank you for the payment or here's creative that we'd like to run for our event, things like that. All of our communication has been positive. All the feedback has been positive. So, you know, what drives me to do it is I see the benefit that we create for our landlords. I see the public-private partnerships that we create with cities. And of course, we're able to create advertising and hire employees and grow a business. And that's what every day I wake up and I'm excited to do.
So it's a mere $63 an hour to the city though, which turns into $550,000 a year for the first term. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe it's not Mr. Becker. His last name's White. All right, great. I guess we'll hear public comments now.
Thank you.
Have any requests to speak? I'll open the public here.
Yes, we have a few requests to speak. We have five in the room and two on Zoom. So we'll start with the ones in the room first. Evan Jorgensen.
Well, let's start with Zoom this time.
You want to do Zoom? Hopefully they're ready. The first speaker on Zoom will be Daryl Myman Brown. And I've asked you to unmute Daryl.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Daryl. You have three minutes.
All right, hold on. Let me, let me get my little paper because you threw me off guard here by starting with us. All right, nice to be here via Zoom. Welcome, excuse me, thank you mayor and city staff. I have some concerns. Mr. Councilman Grandis actually had mentioned one of them with regards to safety and lawsuits and so forth. But the electronic billboard industry, the purpose of the billboard is obviously for advertising. And I heard Mr. White speak about the development fees and so forth. But I'm confused if those are just automatically the taxes that we'd be receiving or if there's some other special type of fee. Because having no effect on our community, as he stated, actually, we're using our roads to advertise for him. And we're using our city for advertising for the billboard company. Most billboards that Becker has done have been in big cities. I think Mayor Protem Konstantin had said, what's the attraction here in Fountain Valley? I am concerned about that. It feels like there's some other motive besides just giving our city some money where we can, we obviously would receive money from the advertising, but we would receive money from our own businesses doing business here as well. And these billboards would most likely be out of range for our businesses to advertise. So who are we advertising for and why in Fountain Valley? And there is proven data that electronic billboards distract drivers. And I heard Mr. White say he hasn't been sued, but have cities been sued because of the billboards? I haven't heard that addressed. So my concern is, yes, I understand there'd be revenue, but is that worth what might happen? And I know none of us are fortune tellers, but it just doesn't seem like it's the right thing for Fountain Valley and the right area. Caltrans has things in place as to not put a bunch of billboards in landscaped areas. Not exactly sure why an unlandscaped area would be considered safer. I just, there's just too much confusion there as to why we need this. I just don't feel it's a good fit for Fountain Valley and I'd just like to be convinced that it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Augie Lascola.
Hi, this is Augie Lascola.
Augie, you have three minutes.
Yes, and I object to the billboard. I, I heard the Becker Board person talking about you can't see it. But believe me, you can see it because you have to read the ads on the freeway. And unfortunately, that's the dangerous part. We in Fountain Valley taxpayers, we don't want these dangerous billboards in our city. They will bring driver distraction and they will be a cause for many automobile accidents and possibly some human fatalities. Do the math. The opportunity for a meager amount of $63 an hour and a 40-year lease of incoming revenue is not worth us changing our very strict sinus ordinances to allow deadly weapon on the 405 freeway in Fountain Valley. That could take human lives, maybe your family and maybe your friends. Is it worth it? Think about that and follow and read and consider the accident facility data. It is out there, believe me. Now, the Becker Board representative said you won't see this sign anywhere in Costa Mesa or in the crossing area. And believe me, you will. Because I do, I do sort of think that the, the, the way the Becker Board's lighting expert, the conclusions were reached that it would not reach Costa Mesa or the crossing area. They only used a measure of light that only partially describes the light emitted by the sign. Don't press that green button tonight and do the right thing and maintain our, and not change our very strict sinus ordinances. As our founders did this, it's for sure that we would be allowed, would not allow a blight in our city and assure that we would stay a nice place to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Last one on Zoom is Ann Beddinger. Ann, you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Everybody can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Notwithstanding the need for additional monies due to spending errors perhaps by the city council, having a 73-foot sign is a safety issue. This sign is not worth anyone's life. City council approved the water tank sign without Caltrans approving a change in their freeway landscape easement. And then we find out tonight that they have in fact approved it. So the city council has gone into the development agreement for this current sign. And I'm wondering if there's anything currently prohibited and assumed to be able to be changed the way the water tower sign was changed. And interestingly enough, in the Decker presentation, one of the words they used themselves was blight as a negative connotation. And I believe that both signs would create blight for our city. Please don't approve this, but if you do, please add that Alco Hall advertising would also be prohibited. Thank you.
Thank you.
It looks like we have one last one. Jay Town.
Hi, everybody, and congratulations to Kim and Mayor Harper for your reelection. So I got a couple of points. I sent a letter. I think that you all got it. So you already know the basis of everything that I think. I think Stephen Schwartz is brilliant and everything that he said I agree with. I think that the presentation tonight reaffirmed that the board to be installed at the Guitar Center is less than 1,000 feet from the water tank board. And I understood that Caltrans requires them to be 1,000 feet apart. So I don't understand how that could even be allowed in the first place. In the second place, I'm on the north side or the west side, I guess, of that sign. I get plenty of light from Hyundai. I don't need more light over here, please. Thank you very much. I do get on the freeway at the Ellis southbound 405 on-ramp, the four lanes. It's great that it's four lanes with only two lanes getting on at the same time because I use that inside lane like a shotgun and it's great. And I, but I know there's cars coming in towards me on the freeway to get off at Harbor. I know there's people getting off at Ellis. I know there's people getting on at Talbert. I know I'm trying to get in the carpool lane as fast as I can. And I don't want people looking at advertising while I'm being crazy trying to get to the carpool lane. I'm sorry, but it just doesn't seem real safe to me. If I get killed, I'm going to put in my will that they should sue the city because this is terrible. Okay, so I got emotional. I'm not supposed to do that. But unemotionally, we have sent you all, all kinds of reports from all over the country telling you the facts about these billboards that are unemotional facts. You need to do the right thing. We don't need this revenue. Please don't do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Who have next?
Now we're off of Zoom. Evan Jorgensen. Once again, everybody, you have three minutes to speak.
Hello again. First off, I think we haven't been given a sufficient notice on this item. Notice is supposed to be given to somebody that lives within 500 feet. I don't know that anybody lives within 500 feet. This is changing our core value of the city of Fountain Valley. The sign ordinance, one of our cornerstones, it should be sent out to the whole city. This fails the sign ordinance in eight points that I have mentioned numerous times to you and to the Planning Commission on height, area, off-site, commercial advertising, the fact that it's just a billboard. It's pole-mounted. It's an electronic message center. It's LED illuminated and it's a traffic hazard. Caltrans prohibits electronic changeable message center displays within 1,000 feet of each other. A lot of Caltrans regulations are just on one side of the road. This one doesn't say that. It's 1,000 feet. You're violation of that. Two, it says it has to be put in industrial and commercial. This is being put into a mixed-use area. He said that you could change it every eight seconds and that's safe. But with two message boards, they're going to be changing every four seconds. So that's unsafe. There has, and you said that there's only been one declassification in Fountain Valley. There's actually been a second one. It's from post mile 14.55 to 14.66, which is in the heart of Fountain Valley. It's next to Bouchard Valley, Bouchard Street, the former site of Spec Services. Last council meeting, you had a closed session in negotiation within, within, with that site for something. I don't know what it is. I suspect it's another billboard. You know, you say you don't have the money, but investments have good years and bad years. CalPERS says you're going to be able to pay off the liabilities by 2036. What's the problem? Sales tax. These boards are advertising for businesses far beyond just Fountain Valley. You know, Fountain Valley doesn't have enough businesses for one of these boards. So the sales tax revenue that you're going to get if, you know, from Fountain Valley businesses is going to be lost because you're advertising to places outside of Fountain Valley. You get $30 million a year in sales tax revenue. This is only giving you $500,000. It only takes 2% drop in sales tax revenue to equal the half a million dollars a year.
Thank you.
Next up is Billboard.
Billboard? Oh, thank you. You fell into that one.
Greetings, Mayor Harper, city council, public at large. Did you hear the one about the religious skunk that went to church every Sunday and sat in his own pew? There are a lot of considerations I have come up here and given in passion pleas before. This time, I'm going to go ahead and be an annoying billboard. Knock, knock. Who's there? Annoying cow. Annoying cow. Boo, moo, moo. So you should have a contest for the crossings. The idea of hiring a consultant, run a contest. The prize could be $100 for your favorite charity. You know, it could be the fountains. It could be anything. Passengers will please refrain from flushing toilets while the train is in the station. Darling, I love you. Let's go walking in the park and goose the statues in the dark. If Buffalo Bill can take it, why can't you?
Do you have any comments about the billboard?
Yeah, I do. The cell privacy screen. He held it up. He said the privacy screen, the, it's no worse than if you're looking at your cellphone and you can move your cellphone on a privacy screen. Who's supposed to be holding a cellphone driving a car? That is unsafe. That is illegal. There's a reason for that. It's distracting. It's distracting. I have been hurt, damaged. I've had vehicles totaled by distracted drivers under no circumstances like this with ads flashing from both sides. It's a lucky thing that as a single mom with two kids to raise and no help, no support, no nothing, almost homeless several times in the course of a lifetime. One of those times, somebody hit me in my cab driving from the rear. I was stopped. The light every day, Birch out there on campus by the airport, every day, the lights were green. The lights were green. The lights were green. Traffic was backed up. Traffic was backed up because there was always traffic. This guy comes through. He sees the green light, doesn't see a bright yellow taxi cap. He slams on his brakes. I look in the rearview mirror, bam! And then I hit the car in front of me, which went bam into the car in front of her. CHP determined that when he hit me, he was going 45 miles an hour. Distracted driver saw a green light, thought, oh, it's all good. Didn't look at the cars. I was living in a motel with my kids, a weekly motel, barely able to make the money because the income was not good at that time. And I had to take a week off when I could not afford it. We damn near wound up on the streets, me and two little kids, because I, the job I had was the job I had and I was working. I was doing my best to work and not be a welfare mom. And for me to have to have gone through that 30 years ago, I'm still, my plates on my car are disabled. I have good times. I have bad times. There are times when I have to use a roll later to get around. You're looking at, I don't care what the money is, I think frankly, your credibility is shot. I don't care what the money is. You're going to have responsibility for people being hurt and that'll be on you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea Martell. Andrea Martell.
I have some clarifications for Mr. Becker. When these signs are lit up at night on the freeway, can, can the drivers see both of them at the same time? With the louvers, as they're approaching these two signs that are right opposite each other?
Oh, excuse me, Ms. Martell, need to address your comments to us. We can, we can save it up and.
Okay, I would like to know from Mr. Becker and you can ask him if people, when they're driving on the freeway.
But we can ask.
Can see both of the signs at the same time. Which is, which to me, he can, you know, he talks about the louvers, but that's a distraction point. It's attractive to look at. And instead of eight seconds and you're cruising along and all these people are whizzing along, you've got, you've got something on both sides flashing at you. And also have, can he also tell us how far at night the message travels? I mean, can you see it a mile away or half a mile away? Is, this is, this is what's the light nuisance in the neighborhoods. If you can see that half a mile away, then that's affecting that neighborhood. Has he done a study? I know they've done studies on, on the effect of, of a single sign and the louvers and how they work. But how, have they done a study with two of them that are facing each other and how those louvers kind of cancel each other out? And so you see much more of this for a longer space of time? This is questions to me. And it would have, and, and if it isn't resolved, we've got this, this crossings project going in. And all of the businesses and homeowners in there could be impacted if these issues of the opposing lights, you know, the louvers aren't the same on them because there's two of them. If that's going to be a nuisance to them, what kind of housing are we providing for these people where they have to put blackout curtains in their apartment to sleep at night because they got this thing flashing every eight seconds and message? And so it seems like we have a unique situation with two opposing billboards. And there ought to be some more answers before we put a final decision on it as to how this all, how they impact each other. I can see how the louvers would stop, you know, the cars coming this way. But if you see both of them, then it could spread the whole effect. And we know we've had complaints from Hyundai and they've had to turn their lights down and everything. But this is different because it's a message and it flashes. And that's, that's, you can't say humanly that you aren't going to be distracted by trying to see what the heck the sign is saying when it's in your face. So I would like, I would just like to see a few more answers clarified before you put the green light on it so we're all more comfortable with it. And I think we could be made comfortable if we, if we deal with these issues upfront.
Thank you.
Rudy Hubner.
Good evening, Mayor Harper, members of the City Council. I'm Rudy Hubner, longtime Fountain Valley resident, and I'm here to speak in favor of this project. And the reason I'm in favor of it is we've been, at the past council meeting and even in the beginning before this meeting officially started, looking over the city's finances. And I feel that I offer a unique perspective on this as probably one of the younger folks in the room. We're talking about this 40-year agreement. And I know that I'll be here in 40 years. Granted, I'll, I'll be a much older woman, but I'll still be a resident of Fountain Valley. And I look at this as an opportunity, as a revenue stream for the city at no cost to residents. And as we're faced with our regular operating budget, we have our general funds, we have the unfunded pension liabilities, we have all of these responsibilities. And this is a great opportunity for us to be fiscally responsible, to make prudent financial decisions so that 30 and 40 years into the future, I'm not the one that's having to have my taxes raised because of poor planning. We have an opportunity in front of us to set up the future so that there doesn't have to be any further taxes on residents to help fulfill the city's financial obligations. And as an addition, I like the fact that the city's also being given a free opportunity to advertise for all of the upcoming events that we have going on. And just as an example, we have our tree lighting coming up. We have holiday ceremonies coming up in December. We have our Lunar New Year festivity that's in the beginning of the year. We also have the egg hunt. We have our great summer activities with Summer Fest, concerts in the park, movies in the park. These are all opportunities for secondary sources of revenue, that sales tax revenue, because more folks are going to know about events happening at Fountain Valley and they're going to come and they're going to shop and they're going to dine in Fountain Valley. And so I think that as you're considering this motion tonight, to please make that financially prudent decision and set us up for success in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Cameron.
Thank you, Council, for allowing me to speak. My name is Tracy Cameron and I really don't need to say a lot because I agree with everything that Rudy said. One of the things that you discussed tonight was the financial shortfall that we very well may be in, regardless of the fact that we have passed HH. It would be fiscally irresponsible to turn down the opportunity to earn with basically no effort on our part, this many, many millions of dollars. It seems to me completely inexcusable that you would say no to this opportunity. Because we have, my only concern throughout this process has been addressed. And that is that we have the opportunity to control what is said on the board so that nothing that we feel is not culturally or any way inappropriate in our town. So we have an opportunity to advertise Summer Fest, one of our awesome activities, other activities that happen in the city. And we have control of being able to say no to, for example, cigarette ads or anything else that we feel isn't a match for our nice place to live. So I totally support that we pass this and we allow this company to work with us and put this billboard up so that we remain fiscally responsible.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Susan Castellanos.
Hi, good evening, Council. I just want to take a moment to let you know that people in Costa Mesa, within 500 feet, also got this notice. And I noticed that none of them are here. Even if they're commercial, they got this notice. This is actually one of them. I want to support this board. I'm here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce, currently am an ambassador and will be and put on the board in December. And they wanted to just state that they are also in favor of this board and fully support it. And it's just a fiscally great decision with no impact fiscally to our residents and nobody in a home can see this. So it's just, makes basic sense to go forward with this decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no further request to speak on this item.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Yes, any additional comments, questions?
I do.
Okay, yes.
Okay, so I found what I wanted to say about driving distraction. So the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, known as the NHTSA, stated there was a 10.5% increase in traffic fatalities in 2021 over 2020. The agency estimated that 42,915 people died in motor vehicle crashes last year, compared to 38,824 in 2020. This represents the highest number of traffic fatalities since 2005. So about California, there's a little part.
Just curious, you brought that up. I question on that. How many of those were caused by billboards?
Well, this is in regards to billboards.
No, you didn't say anything about billboards on there.
Yep, well, I'm sure, let her finish, please.
So the last part is in California, the report is particularly troubling. Traffic deaths were up 10.7%, the second year in a row for the state to show a sizable increase. California led all other states in the nation with an estimated 4,258 traffic fatalities, representing, quote, "a crisis on our roadways," according to state transportation officials. I mean, we all know that people are driving while distracted. You take your eyes off the road for any other reason and it's distracted driving. Right there, you're getting on the freeway. That's why you're in that right lane. And then when you go around the corner, you're on the freeway. The whole area, like I said before, has been changed tremendously. It's wider. It's very, very different. I don't even know how the first one passed, but that's a whole other topic. It's insanity. We should not be sitting here. I'm going to, there's something that, one of the public comments, no cost to residents and poor planning. This is a tremendous cost to our city in a negative way. We're shooting ourselves on this. This is tremendously poor planning. This is our coveted crossings area. Whether we change the name in the future, we don't want to be looking at billboards. Residents don't want to be looking at it. Drivers don't want to be looking at them. And I get that. And I think something that the staff should have explained is that the crossing specific plan is a little bit different than the citywide ordinance about billboards, if I'm correct. I think it would be great for somebody from the staff to elaborate just a little bit. But this is a no. And I don't care about the money. This is not good lucrative funds for the city. We're going to be fine. We're going to look into our numbers. We don't need this. This is going to be a huge problem. And I personally will pray that the other one, the out-front one, does not come to fruition. Because it's a terrible mistake. Thank you.
So I have a question that you brought up all the numbers, et cetera. It's not me ringing. Anyway, the, the number, the increase can be explained though because in 2021, people were working from home. There were less people on the road. So of course, there's a huge increase in 2022 over 2021. You know, I'm not saying, you know, your, your talk about nuclear and all that, I'll give you, you know, that's valid. But some of the other points you're making, one, has nothing to do that we know of regarding billboards, the number of accidents. And two, it's, you know, a year after the pandemic. So if you're going to give facts and you can give numbers, just make sure it ties to what we're talking.
Well, I have older numbers here, but I don't think you want to hear about 2010, quite frankly. It's distracted driving. This is where we're, this is what the topic is.
Okay, any other comments from the council? I have a, I have a, oh, yeah, Councilor Bowie.
Thank you, Mayors. So I do have a few comments. So what I'm hearing tonight from most of the, the audience here at the City Hall and on the Zoom meeting is, I hear on two key issue. One of them is distract drivers. They're the one lights that might impact the neighborhood. So, and some say that it's not a perfect locations. So I want to bring those, those points up. Can you bring up the map that shows where the locations of this billboard would be located at?
Sorry, you want a location of the billboards?
Yes. From the aerial, aerial point of view, looking down.
The best image.
That, okay. So if you could zoom it back, zoom it out a little bit. Or is that's the only one?
I can't zoom it.
Okay, okay, that's, that's fine. So in term of location wise, I mean, I mean, I understand the concern of some of the resident, yes. No money is more valuable than life. I think we all could agree on that. But term of locations on this particular billboard, I think it is perfect locations. Why do I say this? If you look at the surrounding area, it's commercial, industrial. So, I mean, I want to believe the other residents say that I could see it from my house or I could, other resident could see it. But show me the photos, that from any other house that you really could see this, this billboard. I think you could see it, but from a distance. So the impact, I think it's minimal. Now, as far as the distractions, of course, it is a concern to anybody that you don't want to be distracted on the, while driving on the road and cause an accident because of the billboard. Because of that, I would concern. So I reach out to a chief of police and see if he can get any report. And according to him, he reached out to Westminster and they did not have any data that associate with an accident causing by billboard, while they have billboard on their jurisdictions. I went, I went even farther. I call a couple of councilmen from different city, neighboring city and ask them from the time that they put on the billboard, has they have an increase in accident related to the billboard? And the answer is no. So two different sources of information. They're telling me no. But here, and those are professional people, right? They go their resource and they get the evidence, come back, give me those data. But here, the residents say, there's, there's, there's accident. I have to believe on my chief of police on his data. I have to believe on my other city council who's reached out to their department to get the data. So I even asked them, well, you know what? What about CHP? Because we're talking about accident on the freeway, right? CHP must have something. Because the first thing I say, well, you ask the person what happened. He's going to tell me whether it's on the phone or on the billboard. Well, there's no data that says it was the reference to the billboard. So what are the facts? I don't see any facts that the billboard is, is a distraction. And to follow the, to ingrate to Mr. White, who say that Caltrans, if they didn't do their study and there's accident caused by billboard, I don't think the state of California would approve it. Because they would get sued. Caltrans would get sued. The state would get sued. The city would get sued. And the person who put in the billboard will get sued. So.
Please be quiet in the audience. Thank you.
So, so.
Please be quiet. Please be quiet. I'm going to ask you one more time, then I'm going to kick you out.
So I, in term of distract drivers, I don't, I don't see that. Because the data I'm getting doesn't show that. Now, as far as the light, one of the residents say, Hyundai, you know, we have to ask them to shut it down because it's impairing the light into a window. Well, I, I agree with you, but Hyundai have a different light technology. As you have seen, not only see what they're telling you, you've seen the video. So they're using a different louver-like technology here. So, and in addition to that, Mayor Harper mentions about the auto dimming technology. I think this company have, I mean, they, they are concerned about the resident. They do their due diligence and find the best technologies out there. Right? Because definitely, I mean, I've gone to LA and I don't, I didn't see those billboard have the louver technology that he's referring to. You could, wherever, everywhere I go, I see it. But this one does have that technology. So they do care about the people. So that's, I appreciate that very much. In term of, I'm sorry. In term of restrictions, I saw that you mentioned about political speech. I would like to add also, no political campaign. Because speech is different and campaigns different as well. So I want to add that restriction is no political campaign. Am I correct on that or that's different meaning?
I think political speech will cover both.
Will cover both? Okay, I just want to make sure that there's no political campaign on there as well. Now, the, what I want to see, I mean, that's the only two thing I really, I'm here tonight. Is light impacting? I don't see that. Distract drivers, I gave you the example earlier. Now, unless I'm hearing something else different, but other than that, I don't see it. Now, 31, 40 years, Mr. White mentioned it's a 31 million, you know, for the revenue. I'm just curious, if we do it 30 years, how much is the revenue? I'm just, just want to know. Do we have approximately? Okay, all right. Other than that, I don't see any other issues.
Councilor Grandis.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I forget your name, but you asked some questions that I think, you write it down.
Andrea Martell.
Andrea, Ms. Martell, you asked some questions I think, I think deserve some answers. So, so Mr. White, first question is, if you could come up, please. How far from the billboard can you see the billboard? Like if you're on the freeway, how far down the freeway can you see it?
So they say that a good billboard is visible for eight seconds, right? So yes, you can see a billboard. So eight seconds at 65 miles an hour, from what I remember, is about 900 feet, right? So this billboard in particular will, because. So this billboard in particular will, because the freeway is in a straight line, I would assume that the visible messaging would be somewhere around fifteen hundred feet away. When you're actually really seeing the ads and able to tell what it is you're reading, you're about nine hundred feet away.
Okay, but what about the light that you could see?
Yeah, so if you pull back up this map, and one of the things that's nice about these light studies is the light study is measuring the foot candles. And it doesn't have that in here. The previous one did, which was our original digital submittal that didn't include the louver technology, which again, the louver technology blocks any light pollution to the side of the sign. But even being visible, which is the freeway traffic, which is, it's directed and intended to be read from, the very last measurement, what they consider that to be would be the equivalent of a porch light measured from the same distance. So a thousand feet away, a porch light from your house would be the same light pollution that I'm receiving or getting from the digital billboard with its dimming technology at night.
How about thirty-five hundred feet away?
Along the freeway?
From looking at the sign directly from thirty-five hundred feet away, would you see it?
You wouldn't be able, you would.
Okay, because I love Jay Town. And Jay is one of the nicest people I know, most passionate people I know in the city and really cares about it. And she lives thirty-five hundred feet from that sign. I did Google Earth to make sure. And she's one of the closest to the sign. There are others that are a little bit closer, about three thousand feet. I went through Google Earth and I measured all the way around. There's a residential, the closest I could see in Fountain Valley was about twenty-two hundred feet. So based on what you're saying, that's very little impact to what they could see from twenty-two hundred feet.
And unless their house is on the freeway, which obviously it's not, the louver technology would actually block any light spillage to the side.
Well, just in case their house happens to be at an angle that's in line. That's what I care about, because there may be. So, okay, that answers that question. I just want to make sure. She asked a question also about two boards at the, coming down the freeway. I would assume you would see both boards. Maybe at different times, depending on the angle that you're coming, or maybe both at the same time.
Yeah, and I don't have the exact measurement there, right? But, you know, there are fourteen lanes on the 405 here. Seven each direction, plus right away, you know, plus the distance between the freeway and the billboard. So I would assume these billboards are some, again, I don't have the measurement there. What is that? Almost four hundred feet away from one another? Yeah, go ahead, sir.
I can make a comment to that. And another, a previous comment from the public about separation and the thousand-foot separation. The proposed city billboard, if I can go to a larger slide here. The proposed Becker's billboard is right here. It's approximately three hundred and twenty-five feet to the cities, the billboard on the city's property at the water tank. And the thousand square foot, the thousand, the thousand-foot separation requirement, that's on the same side of the freeway. It doesn't include across the freeway. On Caltrans, that also came up in our staff. That question came up on Caltrans's website. It does not differentiate. That just says a thousand-foot separation, doesn't say on the same side or not in the government code. It does differentiate same side of freeway, so.
So if it was a thousand feet and it wasn't allowed, would Caltrans allow this?
They wouldn't issue an outdoor permit.
So it's not really our issue, it's Caltrans issue to say no in that case?
Correct.
Okay. So that's all the questions I have for you, Mr. White, appreciate it. But the, one of my concerns is, I don't think anybody here trusts the state of California. You know, and the freeway is owned by the state of California. It's not owned by the city of Fountain Valley. And one of my big concerns is, what happens if the state decides tomorrow to say, you know what? Look at all this revenue we have. We're putting the billboard there instead, and they get the revenue. So to me, I would rather we do it before the state has a chance to do it, because anything that's there will be grandfathered. And I fully expect when they start seeing the millions of dollars, you know, between these two boards, first year alone, I think we're getting, what is it, almost one point three million dollars in combined revenue. You don't think the state wants that money? So I think we need to, I think we need to act while we can before the state comes in and takes that over. That's one of my concerns about not doing it. We talked about all the different revenue things. You, Mayor Protem Constantine said, and others, why Fountain Valley? Guys, you don't understand, Orange County is thirty-seventh largest economy in the United States. You know, we're bigger than, I think, larger than thirty-seven states. You know, if you don't think we live in a metropolis and the 405 freeway has fourteen lanes of cars because they're full, you're mistaken, you know? There's a reason he wants this board here. It's not because of Fountain Valley. You know, quite candidly, he doesn't want a sign in Fountain Valley. He wants a sign on the 405 freeway. And that's why he's doing that. So it has nothing to do with, you know, I'm sure you're a nice guy and you want Fountain Valley to do well, but you care about that freeway, not about the city of Fountain Valley when it comes to getting your message out. So those are some of the comments that I have.
Hey, Councilor Bowie?
Yeah, and quite candidly, I think that the data will show that we probably will be one of the city the highest paid on the billboard. Right, on this one? On the data wise, I think we are one of the city that will get paid the highest right now on these projections. Yes. So it's only benefit of our resident.
Thank you, Councilor Vo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I obviously have gone through many meetings regarding this proposed billboard. I know this is a love-hate relationship, you know, whether you like it. People go to Las Vegas and see all the light up, and they say, oh, you know, this is heaven on earth. And people that ride by a billboard sign and say, you know, this is trashy. And that's, it's your entire, you're entitled to your own opinion. As I'm sitting here, there are things that concern me, and I would like to direct to the attorney for the city. If there's a lawsuit arise from this billboard, is there a indemnifying laws that protect the city in this?
There are. We have a indemnity provision in the agreement that requires Becker to defend the city in the case of any lawsuit or just about any circumstance. And we're also requiring Becker to get a separate insurance policy. Becker's, I'm sure, well-funded, but we want Becker to have an insurance policy to make sure that if we do have to call on that indemnity, there's an insurance company that actually does the defense, and there's an insurance company that actually has the deep pockets to pay any judgment. So yes, there is both indemnity and insurance in this contract.
And it's also true for the other billboard that the council already approved.
That's correct.
Well, for all considering the demonstration of the louver technology that would prevent light pollution to different driver, from different angle, this is something new that I really appreciate Becker Board has come up with to, with this proposed project. And, you know, this is one of the requirements that we have had. And this is something that I think will benefit all the driver on the freeway. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for Matt.
I have a couple of comments as well for council.
Okay, go.
But go ahead.
Okay. Okay, one of the comments that Evan brought up was that we have a sign ordinance that doesn't allow billboards. How are we sort of getting around that with this particular billboard? And by doing this, do we set a precedent for other property owners in the city that want to put up a billboard on their property?
I was gonna speak to that as well, that came up, some comments. It goes with the bigger picture. Caltrans is just a piece of the puzzle in the permitting process with their permit for billboards along the freeway. The city still has land use control, be it our sign ordinance and then the crossing specific plan. The crossing specific plan governs just a certain portion of the city, has its own sign regulations. This code amendment would just change crossing specific plan to allow for one single billboard, be it the Becker billboard tonight in the city. The rest of the city side ordinance is staying the same, which prohibits billboards, electronic signs, all the above. If another operator wanted to apply for a billboard, it would have to come before the council again has another code amendment, and they would have to also apply to Caltrans for a permit through them. Now, everybody knows the construction of the 405 freeway the last several years. A couple areas, and I just learned about this actually today, a couple areas along the 405 freeway have been declassified as landscape freeways, which opens that door to allowing a permit to be applied for through Caltrans. However, whatever jurisdiction that may be along the freeway, that local jurisdiction still has to approve that sign. So as it stands right now, there's only one permitted billboard in the city, and that's on the city's water tank that was approved by council. The code amendment tonight would allow for the second billboard in the city and no more, unless a future code amendment was applied for by another applicant.
And not to get too far into the weeds, what about, we have billboards on Harbor Boulevard. Are those treated differently, or?
Those were, to my knowledge, permitted before they were incorporated into the city. And there has been some discussions about removal of those over a certain time.
Got it, okay, thanks. All right, well, I'll hear from Mayor Protem Constantine.
So Colin, why would Becker boards need to have all that extra insurance? Would it be because of possible lawsuits, maybe driver distractions?
We require insurance on every vendor contract, every public works contract. The contracts that you approve tonight, they would all have an insurance provision. The rationale for insurance is when you're dealing with a business entity. The business entity can exist one day and not exist the next. Or they can still be there and they just don't have the funding to defend a large lawsuit against some large entity. And insurance is there because you never really know what could happen. The concern for this, the insurance policy that was added to this is one that is a standard policy compared to our vendor contracts, and it was, it was put in as basically a standard provision.
Thank you.
And I call Matt Jenkins, did you have additional comments you wanted to make?
No, I'll just expand on the permitting process. Going back to, again, another code amendment would have to be brought before council to allow for a third billboard in the city. So, and to clarify, the thousand square foot, a thousand-foot separation was for signs on the same side of the freeway. And any other questions council may have?
Thank you. Oh, just curious to the council, you know, as far as the term of the contract, the forty years, my primary, I guess, thought is that's a long time. And, you know, I don't mind having a forty-year contract, but I, because we have a fifteen-year sort of initial term with the other one, I'd propose maybe having a fifteen-year initial term and then it renews for another fifteen plus ten. So we still have forty years, but after fifteen years, if we decide that, you know, this is terrible, we made a huge mistake, then at least we have a kind of an off-ramp after fifteen years. So I just want to see.
So Mayor, are you proposing a thirty years plus one option of ten years?
No, I propose forty years, but it'd be fifteen first term, fifteen second term, then ten or twenty and twenty. Something that, where there's a earlier time to exit. And I guess I'd have to, you know, want to get feedback from Mr. White on something like that.
Yeah, this was something that Omar had contacted me about earlier this morning, and I had the chance to speak with my business partner on that. I think it'd be fair to match the city deal, so the same term, fifteen and fifteen, we would be fine with.
Okay. What about, okay, so we do fifteen, fifteen, ten, if, you know, if you want to keep the forty years, yeah?
Yes, of course, that'd be fine.
Okay.
So are we doing fifteen, fifteen with an option ten?
That's, yeah, that's what I would sort of propose. But I want to see what the other council members think.
If it's okay with Mr. White, as long as the dollars don't change, I'm good with that.
Do we need to amend any of the contract documents? Or can we approve it tonight and then amend it later? Or we need to redraft everything?
It's a simple redraft, and a development agreement has to be adopted by ordinance, so it takes two reads anyway, so I can make that change and bring it back for the second read.
All right, well, I guess from my standpoint, I just first want to say thank you to Mr. White. I know you've been at this for a long time and really appreciate all the accommodations you've made from, I'm sure, your property owner to the city and everything. And, you know, I just want to say, really appreciate that.
And thank you guys for the opportunity. I mean, it's been a long haul, but, you know, I think in the beginning, I understood the common goal, and it just took us, you know, several years to get there. So, you know, I think we all listen to each other. I think we all acquiesce to some extent. And I think the deal before you is a very favorable deal to the city. So I think it's gonna benefit the city for a long time.
Thank you. Yeah, and I also, Rudy Hubner mentioned the opportunity to advertise for city events and city advertising. I think that's gonna be a benefit. And as Councilor Vo said, you know, it's definitely a love-hate relationship. Some people like them, some people don't, and that's okay. But I think that after kind of reviewing what they've proposed and the, you know, the long-term benefit to the city, I'm gonna be in favor of this. Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Obviously, as we are seated here and try to make this easy about this proposed project, things are coming to my mind. When I first elected to city council, 2010, the city annual operating budget is thirty-five million dollars. In twelve years now, we are operating at seventy-five million dollars. And tonight, with the budget study, we look at that sort four. So I'm looking at my own household. Let's say if I don't make enough income during my daytime job, I could drive Uber and, you know, try to supplement income for my family. But I cannot drive Uber for the city of Fountain Valley to make the income. And I'm responsible, I'm entrusted with the responsibility to make sure the city is financially sound. And I look in at pro and con, every single letter, every single email that's sent into the city, to the city council, to oppose this project, to pull this project. I have read through every single one of them. I have heard all your comment during the planning commissioner meetings. And tonight, you know, people are coming up and say yes and no to the same projects. And I do appreciate your comment. That's what, that's what we are here for. We are here to hear both sides of the argument. But the responsibility is raised on my shoulder and this council to see if we can move forward with this responsibility. So with those comment, Mr. Mayor, I am going to make a motion that we approve and adopt the following, item A, approve the attached resolution for the city of, city council of the city of Fountain Valley approving an MND slash MNRP in according with the CEQA guideline. And item B, approve an introduction and first read on ordinance approving CA nineteen dash oh six. And item C, approve an introduction of, and first read of an ordinance approving development agreement with the city of Fountain Valley and Becker Board, small L O C, for the construction of the new seventy-foot tall EMC with two display.
And Mr. Mayor, the ordinance titles are slightly different than the agenda, so for belt and suspenders, I should probably read the ordinance by title only.
For belt and suspenders?
Yes.
What is that?
It's a legal term.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
The first one is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fountain Valley approving code amendment. The first one is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fountain Valley approving code amendment number nineteen dash zero six to amend the Fountain Valley specific plan, section two dot nine dot one B two, special signs, and adding FVCSP two dot nine dot five dot V, electronic message center sign EMC. And the second ordinance is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Fountain Valley approving a development agreement between the city of Fountain Valley, BSPE four oh five LLC and Becker Board, small LLC, for the construction of a new seventy-three-foot tall electronic message center EMC sign with two displays located on private property at eighteen three seventy-five Euclid Street.
And, um, can I request that they, we put in the, instead of the term of forty years flat, we just do fifteen, fifteen, ten?
I will make that change and bring it back for the second read.
All right, we have a motion, do I hear a second?
I wanna make a, I wanna make a little comment before we vote on this.
Okay.
For the public who didn't get a chance to follow the planning commission that was held two weeks ago, the planning commission, uh, board also believe this will be good for the city. And my understanding, the vote on that was four to one. So just wanna share that to the public. We don't make decisions, but like for reason, like campaign contributions or, or whatnot, but we also listen to the planning commissions, and they favor this project. Just wanna let the public know, if you didn't get a chance to view that. Thank you.
I will go ahead and second the motion. Um, I did want to ask Omar, for the, there were a couple of recommendations from the planning commission as far as, uh, using the up-to-date low-light technology and also specifying the height from the existing grade. Has that been incorporated into this version of the?
I'll defer that to Matt.
Yes, um, and in, one of the conditions of approval is to submit, um, a study showing the, the light, uh, after construction of the sign, and, uh.
Well, you know, I don't think that's it, they, they, um.
Your, your second point was on the light, your first point was on the grade of the freeway.
No, the, uh, planning commission recommendation, they recommended to make certain changes to the language, uh, that was presented to them. I just wanna make sure those were incorporated.
I don't believe that language.